Meeting, um, who we truly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our strong law. Thank you. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast on cable television on Channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 874-304-1455. Enter 1428 pound to the meeting number and 12345 to the access code. This phone number is only accessed for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so by mistake, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcripts, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, on the agenda this evening, we have public service announcements, we'll have our moment of silence, we have Sturbridge Fire Department recognition of firefighters, we have an application from Burger King for common victual license, audit reports from Sturbridge Fire Department, Town Administrator, we have several action items, consideration and possible action on resignation of Ryan Tonda as firefighter slash EMT, consideration and possible action on approving interlocal contracts for cooperative purchasing with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, consideration and possible action on a request for solicitude and connection at 501 Sennett Lane, except the resignation of Linda Hatch as a part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department, except the resignation of James Cottick as part-time police officer for the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on a drone policy for the Sturbridge Police Department, consideration and possible action on agreement with Tri-Galle Inc. Nutrition Program and the Sturbridge Council on Aging, consideration and possible action on an intermunicipal agreement for participation in Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '25, consideration and possible action on the settlement of a claim for motor vehicle damage to a hydrant, consideration and possible action on a request by the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission to find that heel Sturbridge Inc. is in compliance with all municipal bylaws and ordinances in relation to their application for license for adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 600 Main Street, consideration and possible action on a request by the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission to find that key of a patient connection LLC is in compliance with all municipal bylaws and ordinances in relation to their application for license for an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 365 Main Street, and we have old business COVID-19 update, consideration and possible action on approving a multi-year electricity purchase of buildings, medical road update on water testing, new business, we have discussions on Sturbridge Board of Selectmen, sponsor, policy amendment to the question with Senator Corrigan for you with minutes of July 20, citizens forum, and then in the adjournance. Could we please have a moment of silence for all those who died with COVID and all the other people affected by it? Okay, thank you. Okay, first on the agenda, we have public service announcements, Ian, do you have anything?
I, I do not.
Geez. Chase, do you have anything?
I have none.
Okay, Mike, do you?
Neither do I. I have none.
Okay, Mary, do you?
No.
Okay, I have a few here, um, Jeff, this one's kind of, I found it confusing reading it. It's the drive-up Walgreens will be doing a drive-through Walgreens Thursday, September 11th, from 11 to 1:00. Is that the Walgreens in Sturbridge?
Andrea, do you remember that?
I took what, exactly what Leslie had provided us and put it there, so I'm not sure which Walgreens she was referring to.
Yeah, because we don't have a drive-through.
Well, I think the car, wait a minute, I think the cars drive-through, it's not a drive-through at the Walgreens, the cars come through, you don't have to get out of your car.
Yeah, curbside.
Right, yeah, that's what that means, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that's Thursday, September 11th, 11 to 1:00. Phones can be picked up at the senior center Tuesday and Thursday from 8 to 12:00. Phones must be filled out prior to drive-through, open to all Sturbridge residents in town, and Tuesday, September 29th, and Thursday, October 1st, 10 to 3:00 p.m. Then Leslie said we're working with, with the Community Action Council on assistance in first-time applicants with home heating assistance. All information is posted on the Council of Aging website, or you can call senior center We have the public service announcement in the summer paving program update, um, I won't read Mondays because that's all been done, but Tuesday morning, Cheltenham Street and Chamberlain Ave., um, they will be doing the milling, the roads will be closed through traffic. Residents, however, will be allowed access. Tuesday afternoon, Downing Hill Road, road will be closed from Owensby Entrance to Dowdy Road, residents will be allowed access. Wednesday morning, 8:00, they'll probably still be on Stallion Hill Road. Wednesday afternoon, 8:00, Brookfield Road, from approximately 61 Brookfield Road to the Mass Pike Bridge. We'll be milling the southbound side and running one-way alternating traffic on the northbound side. There will be delays getting through, so you should try to avoid the area. Tuesday afternoon, 8:00, Brookfield Road, we should be finishing up on Brookfield Road. Aiding on Brookfield Road, Downing Hill, scheduled for August 13th and 14th at this point. Other paving will follow, but no confirmation on when yet. Okay, that's it, public service announcement, okay, um, Mr. Chief, on, oh, good evening, Chief. You have a few citations?
Good evening, yes, I do, um, just like this with, um, we just held a very brief ceremony here at the Public Safety Complex, um, and the individual who, um, was saved on, uh, June 2nd was present with his family, um, he was able to, um, walk in and out on his own power, thankfully, and thanked everyone for, um, their help. Um, this is, uh, one of those times where I get to peacock a little bit and, uh, show pride in the department and the individuals that work here, um, for going, uh, above and beyond their, their regular duties. Many people would say that, uh, this was just part of their regular workday, but, um, I would take exception to that, um, being that more often than not, we don't have a successful outcome when we deal with these types of circumstances, so, um, I have the four firefighters with me here in my office, I'm gonna turn the screen to them, and then, uh, with your permission, I'll read, um, basically the, um, the text of each letter of recognition, but I'll read it one time for everybody. Um, is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, so, on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020, at, uh, 15, 16 hours, firefighters Volpe, Towns, Becker, and Vono, along with Sergeant Larry Bateman and Officer Garrett Dana from the Sturbridge Police Department, were dispatched to 35 Wells Park Road for a 59-year-old male that was in cardiac arrest with CPR in progress. The firefighters, along with the police officers, arrived on scene to find the patient in the backyard on the ground with a homeowner performing CPR. The crew worked efficiently together with the police officers, performing advanced life support skills to revive the patient. Upon arrival at UMass Memorial Hospital, the patient's pulses had returned, he had a blood pressure and was breathing on his own. Police officers and firefighters remained professional and calm, performing as they were trained, and all of their efforts to resuscitate the patient were successful. The patient was released from the hospital several days later. In recognition of their outstanding efforts to assist the male patient in cardiac arrest, and in acknowledgement of their exceptional work and dedication to their profession, and with the sincerest gratitude of the Town of Sturbridge Fire Department, they are each issued a notice of an official letter of recognition for their actions. In addition to the firefighters and the two police officers, dispatcher Bruce, who took the 911 call, was also awarded a letter. I'd like to congratulate these four individuals, as well as the two police officers and dispatcher Bruce, on a job well done.
Okay, thank you, Chiefs, and congratulations to you four, plus the two officers, and on behalf of the town, we certainly do appreciate your extraordinary effort doing your job. Again, congratulations. Anybody else on the board want to say anything?
I just also want, uh, Mary Dowling, and it doesn't get any better than that, uh, what you're being recognized for, helping to save a, save a life, so, Mary Planchard's correct, it's extraordinary job performance.
Chief, just wanna congratulate you guys and say that Sturbridge, Sturbridge is very lucky to have, uh, men and women like you on our force, thank you.
This is Ike Suppanat, and, um, I'd also like to thank, uh, the great performance of the, uh, EMTs and paramedics that we have. I, I know they've saved, uh, more lives than this, uh, over the years, and they're a great asset to our community.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a common victual license application from Burger King. Is there anyone here representing Burger King?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, could you introduce yourself to?
Yeah, uh, my name is Jessica Burnier, I'm the district manager for the Burger King.
Okay, any, any questions from the board? Is there someone willing to make a motion to approve the license?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to, Jeff, that's written.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the common victual license for Burger King, 374 Main Street, okay.
There a second? Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, so it's unanimous. Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have department reports, Chief Garso.
Good evening again, um, you have in front of you the reports for, uh, the months of June and July 2020, um, as I mentioned in my last report, our level of, uh, call, our call volume has not really, um, changed much from month to month. Um, we're running about average for the number of calls we're doing each month, um, we have noticed a little bit of a decrease in the amount of mutual aid calls we're doing, and I attribute that to the fact that the towns of, um, Wales, Brookfield, and Holland have contracted with a private ambulance service, uh, to provide 24/7, uh, paramedic coverage. Um, there were some gaps in their, their coverage prior to this agreement, so we were doing a little bit more, uh, of their mutual aid calls. Uh, other than that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sorry, Mary, I was curious, when did they enter into those contracts, this summer?
I believe the first contract was signed at the beginning of March to take them to June 30th, and then they just renewed, um, for, they're, they're in the process of renewing for an additional three years with action ambulance out of Polio.
Thank you, Chief.
Really, the big, the big ticket item for me, this report, is, is the, uh, the recognition of the four firefighters, and as I mentioned before, there, there are some people who say they were just doing their regular duty, and I, I beg to differ with that, there, there are more often times that we don't get to celebrate somebody's success, um, and I think that, um, you know, it's, it's a good practice, not only for, um, the morale of the fire department, but for the, the community to see the efforts, the positive efforts of the, uh, the firefighters and the police officers and how we work together.
Okay, any questions on, uh, June report? Okay, the July report? Chief, because I did notice, and, um, I know it has been brought up by myself at the earlier meetings, about who does the inspections, and I do see we have some other people doing some of the inspections, which is good, because that's what the board's intention was at the time, to have more than one person doing it, but I do notice that, uh, on some of them, it just says inspection fire under the column per inspector.
Um, that, that's quite possibly because we didn't have an individual set up with an identified, um, profile in the reporting software, we're working to rectify that, and the going forward, um, we, we hope to appoint a, a dedicated fire inspector, however, the practice of the shift commanders, um, doing the inspections on a day-to-day basis, um, I hope to continue that. Um, we do run into problems sometimes with scheduling, because we'll schedule a window of time for them to do a smoke inspection for a real estate sale, and they won't be able to get there because they're, they're busy doing emergency calls, and sometimes it creates a little bit of tension from the customer service point, but we're working to try and keep those to a minimum as well.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board? Do you have anything else, Chief?
I don't, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna stick around if that's okay for the HDAC discussion, in case there are questions that I can answer, but, uh, other than that, I'm, I'm, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have the town administrators update.
All right, um, thank you, Madam Chair, board members, you have my written report, I'll be happy to answer any questions about what's on that. I do have a few additional items, uh, that aren't on the report. Uh, the first one is the nursery school, uh, as you remember, there was a water leak, uh, the insurance company is handling the repairs to the building, but, uh, there had to be some abatement of the flooring, so it's right now, they've torn up the flooring down to the original wide boards and dirt to get rid of the hazardous materials, and we're getting an inspection to make sure that the, the frame and the joists aren't rotted and can support a new floor, so hopefully in the next meeting, I'll have a report back for you on that. Um, we're, as school begins to, uh, develop plans for reopening, we're also looking at the DPW garage and how we coordinate the bus drivers, uh, as you know, the bus drivers use the DPW garage for their staging area, there's only one restroom, it's very congested, so we're looking at options, perhaps bringing in a, a separate trailer for the bus operations for a while, we're look, working with, uh, Department of Local Services to see if that's something the COVID funds we were allocated can pay for, uh, and we hope to have an answer for you, uh, at the next meeting, but, uh, finding a, a, a separate area for the bus drivers, I think would help with the social distancing and just from a restroom perspective, make it easier for everybody to operate. The first meeting in September, the Board of Selectmen, of course, falls on Memorial, or Labor Day, um, ordinarily, I would imagine you push that to the Tuesday, but the Planning Commission or Planning Board has already advertised for, uh, cases on that night, so I'm wondering if you wanna move your September meeting from Monday to Wednesday, September 9th, that night is open, if you wanna do that? I'll be happy to take feedback on that.
How's the board feel? Ian, is that okay with you?
The Wednesday works better for me, yep.
Okay.
Mary, I'm fine with that. Okay, Mike?
I believe that I'll be fine with, I'll be fine with that as well.
Okay, Chase?
Yeah, that sounds good to me, thanks.
Okay, and I have no problem.
Okay. Couple other items, um, 8, 8 Brookfield Road, we talked a little bit about this last year, and we are getting, again, several requests to see what we wanna do with this building, uh, we kinda left it at town meeting, that the town would bring something back to town meeting to vote on, um, and I'm wondering if the board would find it acceptable for me to bring you something to review, to put out on the street about what we wanna see with the building, or accept proposals or something, um, because there are people that are interested in the property. If we wanna save it, that's fine, um, but coming to a conclusion on something to do with the building would be helpful for me as people approach the town about wanting the building, so I'll be happy to put together an RFP request for people who wanna either purchase or lease the building and have the board review that. Would that be acceptable?
How's the board feel? Uh, would the board rather have an executive session for us to discuss it first? Mike, how do you feel?
I, well, I think we should, uh, move forward, and if it would affect the financial interest of the town on strategizing, on how we, uh, would go outward in our F P, I would think that should be done in executive session. Uh, if there's no financial impact for the town, then we could do it in open session.
Chief?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike, I would like to see us move forward, and, you know, if we have to go into executive session to discuss, uh, discuss the financial strategy, that'd be one thing, but I'd like to move forward with it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree that, um, executive session is probably the better form, because of course it's going to have potential impact, and then I'd also like to know, uh, before any requests or proposals go out, who has, um, you know, approached, uh, who has approached you, Jeff, whether they wanna lease, long-term lease, short-term sale, so I think executive session is probably the best place to discuss all of this. And it is tough, because we did leave at, at town meeting, um, pretty up in the air with respect to that for the future, so.
Okay, Ian, how do you feel?
I'd have to agree with everybody else, talk about it in private, and then go back to the town.
Okay, Jeff, so you can set up, up, what about before our next, uh, meeting?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What about an executive session at the beginning of our next meeting?
Uh, I'll see about setting that up.
Chief.
Uh, and one other thing, um, this week, I'll be taking most of Thursday and all of Friday off, um, if there's an issue with that, please let me know. I had, I had hoped to, and then if you have any questions on anything else in my report, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay, anyone have questions on anything in the report?
I had, I had a question. On the, uh, water bill early warning program, we got the short-term answer of, uh, it could do monthly, uh, billing, but, uh, technology has developed where, uh, where, uh, water meters can actually be read, uh, through a cellular system, uh, every, uh, few minutes, and, uh, that same cellular system can warn, uh, homeowners, uh, and, and the Badger meters that we have, they, um, the, uh, replacement, uh, electronics on them, uh, could, or are capable of warning people of a slow leak or a major, uh, leak, and, and all sorts of things with regard to their usage, uh, and there are apps that go, you know, it'll go right to your cellphone, so, I think long-term, I'd like to know, you know, what, what the cost would be on, on, uh, an early warning system for the, um, for the water department. I think it, you know, it's probably expensive, but if we do it over a period of time, you know, it's part of the enterprise cost, and we should take a look at it anyhow, but we should know what the cost would be first.
Makes sense.
Yeah, but Jeff, because the last time it was brought up, when Shane was before the board, he had mentioned that it was quite a bit of a cost, so if we could get, you know, more specific than that... know, more specific than that.
Sure.
Hey, Mary, you gonna say something?
Yeah, I didn't gather, I didn't realize there was a heavy cost component when I, for. I thought it could be done, you know, through the finance department, the information given to, I don't know, it didn't mention any kind of money. So at least monthly, I thought it was more, you know, what, when do you want to alert residents in terms of how much more water they use? You know, when they hit the 20% mark, I was thinking maybe 25% more water than typical, they could be notified. But I thought that's what we were going to be discussing. I didn't realize that it was a major undertaking from reading it. So maybe Jeff can comment.
I think we're, I think we're talking about two separate avenues towards the same point. Um, your perspective I put in the memo for the report was using the existing meters, it takes about seven hours to drive around and read them electronically because there is, we don't have to physically read the meters. We gather the information from telemetry off the meter. And then we apply it to the software monthly and then we can judge who's using X amount percent more or less. So it's much more, it's a mechanical function. We're not billing monthly. We're still billing quarterly, but we're kind of alerting ourselves to who may be having a problem monthly. And then Mike's talking about an upgrade to the meter itself where you can read it, you don't need to actually visit the meter to read it. It'll automatically transmit data to a location that can incorporate with the software. So there are two different avenues. One is a meter upgrade, one is a process change.
Okay, so that's what I thought. So I mean, in terms of the long-term, the meter upgrade is certainly something to look into, but I feel like in the short-term, we can add a minimum institute what Jeff was referring to in the memo. And at least that's going to alert residents monthly rather than quarterly. And that's going to save them at least 75% of the charges that they would have had. Um, you know, last week we had potentially a leaking um toilet, I believe. I don't know if it was ever proven. But instead of finding out in three or four months, you can find out in one month and at least it's a start. Because this has come up a number of times and even with our, before Jeff was here, we thought about looking into the way, and I know it was going to be a little more time-consuming. But what Jeff describes right now, I think that we could vote on that tonight and long-term look into like a meter upgrade. But at least it's an improvement because I have a hard time sitting here when residents come in and, you know, they're paying a thousand dollars for their water. And, but you know, is perhaps due to a leaky hose or a faucet, if we have the ability to help them out in that way, I think that we should, we should do it. So I would be in favor of taking immediate action in the short-term. Jeff?
Yes, I certainly understand. I would ask for some time for us to work out the details and maybe test it before we adopt it as a process. And we can bring that information back to you on how it tested and what we found before we actually vote on it and make it something that we do routinely and notify the residents about.
I would feel more comfortable with that. Also checking on what would the cost be if there is a cost. I can't imagine there wouldn't be a cost. We get, no matter who does something, we get tired for the extra work. So the more information we have, I think the better. So.
Okay.
Okay, Nathan?
Oh, I'm fine with that. It seems like it's going to require some time, but I think that it shouldn't cost that much. So I'd be curious to see what the owner says on that.
Okay. I'll bring back some more detail.
Okay. Okay, next we have action item. The first one is a letter of resignation from Ryan Swanda as a firefighter slash EMT with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Um, has everyone had a chance to read his letter? If he's moving out of town, actually out of, actually out of area. So is there someone willing to make a motion?
Uh, this is Mike. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter EMT Ryan Swanda from the Sturbridge Fire Department effective July 31st, 2020. And I would add the comment of the chief uh to accept his resignation with regret.
Do a second. Mary Dowling. Hey, Casey, yes. Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote? Mary, yes. Ian?
Ian, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chase?
Uh, Chase, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on approving an inter-local contract for cooperative purchasing with Houston Galveston Area Council. Jeff?
Yeah, just to back up on the previous item, um, we've sent um exit interview forms to all the employees that are leaving and giving them the option to fill them out or have an in-person exit interview. So we've restarted that process and hope to continue it.
Okay, that's good. Okay, who would like to explain this item, chief or Jeff?
Um, I'll start and the chief can fill in the blanks. Um, the Houston Galveston Area Council is a very active purchasing agent and they, uh, for whatever reason, they've become kind of the go-to for lots of cities and towns across the country to purchase goods and services such as purchasing off, purchasing off a state bid or purchasing from the General Service Administration. Um, of particular interest to us is their fire truck bids. They have a, they have a extensive process that meets the Massachusetts bidding procedures for how they bid and vet fire truck options. So in preparation for replacing our um truck that basically fell apart, uh, we want to join this consortium. It's free of charge and then utilize their purchasing power to eventually purchase a fire truck and replace the one that the frame rusted out on. And I'll ask Chief Grasso to fill in the blanks there.
I, I think, I think that's pretty succinct. Um, this is very similar to using the Massachusetts State Bid Program. Um, the HDAC does the big work for um sending out the bid requests. Um, we have run this through town council and they have uh given their blessing on HDAC to the extent that they feel HDAC complies with all of um, chapter 30, section 22 procurement procedures. Um, and as Jeff said, we're kind of doing this as a precursor to the bid process or to the purchase process for the new fire truck. We just wanted to get into the consortium um so that we can use their purchasing power when we're ready.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is someone willing to make a motion?
This is Mike and I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the board's, on behalf of the board.
Do a second.
I'll second Mike's, yeah.
Okay, any discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote? Mary? Yes. How do you vote? Yes. Hey, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have consideration of the request for sewer system connection at 51 Seneca Lane. Do you, does the board have any question on that? Jeff?
Yes, the owner, uh, Stephen Sexton is on the meeting this evening. If you have any questions of the owner?
Sorry, Jeff, you cut out, did you call me to speak or is that for one of them?
Uh, I just mentioned your name and, and let them know you were here in case they had any questions for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, my only question would be if, uh, if, uh, the DPW director is which, uh, okay with this? And that's my only question.
My understanding he is.
Can you, any other?
Oh. He jumped the gun. Just going to make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh the sewer service to the newly created lot at 51 Seneca Lane, condition upon endorsement of the A and R uh plan for the lot.
Do a second.
I'll second Mike's motion.
Okay, that was Ian. Any discussion? Mary, how do you vote? Yes. Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have. Sorry about that. A resignation of Linda Hatch as a part-time dispatcher for the Sturbridge Police Department. Chief, do you want to say anything?
You're muted, Chief.
She just doesn't have the time, she said, to work any shifts. She's been, uh, taken a little time off to take care of her grandchildren and, uh, she's a full-time dispatcher in another community and she just doesn't have the time anymore.
Okay, and you want this retroactive to march?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
I'm, okay, I'll give the letter of resignation from Linda Hatch.
I'll second it. Mike, I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Mary, how do you vote? Mary, yes. Ian?
Ian, yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have a letter of resignation of James Pugus as a part-time police officer for the Sturbridge Police Department. Would have any questions? Anyone will? Mary?
Yeah, I, I read this question for those watching. Um, one of the reasons Mr. Code has cited is in face, quote, anti-police and political climate sweeping the Commonwealth. And all I want to say is I think it's really concerning when good police officers from this department take care, we have a lot to be proud of, that the Commonwealth or the residents that live, you know, appreciate them or they feel they are not rewarded because of those other officers who have mostly abused their power. And, um, it's concerning to me and I hope that our police department morale stays up because our police department has a lot of good and, again, concern to read the reason why he, one of the reasons why he has chosen to resign. So I just wanted to say that for the record. Um, I don't know if you have any comments on that, but, um, it did surprise me to read that some officers are feeling this level of anti-police animus, if you will. So that's it.
Okay, Mary. Andrea, did we get a second on that motion?
I don't think we made the motion. You just said, anybody have questions? And I had a comment.
Right, there was no motion.
Okay, Andrea, thank you. Someone willing to make a motion then?
Mary Dowling, I'll make a, to accept the resignation of police officer Codez, um, with regular.
I'll second that, Chase.
Okay, any more discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration of and possible action on a drone policy for the Sturbridge Police Department. Jeff, do you want to go over this or?
I, I'm gonna just, you see what's in my memo. There was some money put aside for, approved at town meeting for a drone system and I'll leave it up to Chief Desert to kind of fill you in on the details and where they are and what the request is this evening.
Hey, Keith?
Okay, so I put this policy together through, adopted it through another police department that was an accredited police unit. I've sent it off to our equipment department in agreement, had no response back, uh, negative or positive. So that was well over 30 days ago. I also sent it to town council and the mass, uh, talked to them, um, it is, all the standards in there are marked for our mass police accreditation. So it's, it's a good policy. It's, uh, very well put together. We do have, uh, we did do a selection process. Two officers put in. I selected one of the officers and he is currently in the process of getting his pilot's license, which is a pretty, um, a lot of studying material. And I'm hoping he takes that, uh, this week. And we already have the certificate of authorization through the FAA. So I'm hoping within the next week or two, we can have a, a drone ready and available.
Okay, any questions from the board? I've got one. Mary?
I think this is great that this was approved. We're moving forward. Is, is what officer being trained with a drone proficient, do you think?
Uh, for, for now, at some point later on, once we get our feet wet with it, I'm certainly going to consider looking at how much time it costs, how much training time and when everything's all suddenly done, it, it probably would not hurt to have an additional officer. So we have, uh, multiple officers trained to fly the drone unit when needed.
That's awesome, okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I, I, uh, Mike, uh, I, I had some, uh, I was looking for, uh, you know, protections for privacy. Uh, and it's, it's well covered under, uh, paragraph M and, under the use of the USA, UAS, and also under restrictions on, on paragraph D. But my question is, is But my question is, it protects people inside of their private dwellings, which is, you know, you need a warrant to do that. But there are non-public spaces outside that may at times require a warrant. And I was wondering, the wording could be tweaked to include, you know, outside private spaces for protection. Well, as, you know, obviously in dwellings, you can't surveil that without a warrant, but how about outside in somebody's backyard or something, if you would normally need a warrant to go on?
This still requires you to have a warrant. If you're gonna do anything in anybody's yard or anything like that, you're still gonna have to get a warrant, privacy protections in there, and town council can take a pretty good look at that. And all flight missions have to go through a supervisor to get approval.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, I mean, this is a very, very good policy, and I just, that was my primary concern, was, you know, privacy and.
Absolutely. No, we will not be violating anybody's privacy, we will do everything by the, by the numbers.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Somebody willing to make a motion then?
I'll go ahead, Chase, approve the proposed standard operating procedure for unmanned aircraft system, chapter 300 dash 50 for the Sturbridge Police Department.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second it, Mike.
Okay, any discussions? Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, hold the mic.
Thank you.
You too. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on an agreement with the Tri-Valley Incorporated Nutrition Program and the Sturbridge Senior Center. Anyone have any questions on it? Just to give a background.
This is kind of an annual agreement, so just bringing it back to you.
Any no questions? Somebody want to make a motion then?
This is Mike, I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize the chair to sign the agreement with Tri-Valley for the nutrition program.
Is there a second? Here we go.
Hi.
Okay. Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on intermunicipal agreements for participation in the Central Massachusetts Regional Stormwater Coalition for fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '25. Jeff, you want to give a little synopsis, please?
Yes, the regional storm water coalition works with all the towns in its group on compliance with the Clean Water Act, community education towards the Clean Water Act, advice and technical expertise to its member communities. According to Butch and Mark over DPW, this group has served us well, and they would like to continue participation. As I, as it said in the memo, normally the dues per year are $4,000 a year, but for next year, they've reduced that to $1,000 due to COVID and financial implications due to COVID. But we would ask that you renew the agreement for the next five fiscal years or four fiscal years.
On compliance with the Clean Water Act, community education.
Okay, any questions?
Mary, has it always been with just Spencer?
I think Spencer, and I had that same question, I think Spencer's just the collating town. I think they collect the money and they administer the funds, but it is with, it's more regional, but everybody contracts with Spencer.
Okay, they only contract, but then we don't contract everybody together.
Any other questions? Someone willing to make a motion then?
Mary Dowling, I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement with the intermunicipal agreement for participation in the Central Mass Regional Coalition for fiscal years '21 through fiscal year '25, and authorize our chair to sign the agreement.
Mike, second?
Okay, any discussions? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
And Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next. We have consideration and possible action on settlement of a claim for motor vehicle damage to a hydrant at 210 Fountain Road. Anyone have any question on this? Everyone read through it? Or anyone willing to make a motion then?
Chase, I'll make a motion to accept the proposed settlement for $429.38 and authorize the signing released by the chair.
You have a second?
Mary Dowling, I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on the request by the Massachusetts Cannabis Commission to find that Heal Sturbridge, Inc. is in compliance with all municipal bylaws and ordinances in relation to their application for license for an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 365 Main Street. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. The CCC has sent this request to us for the board to review to whether or not the applicant is in compliance with all ordinances, bylaws in relation to their application. I have asked all the departments that have regulatory impact on this facility and all the departments, conservation, building, planning, the police, all find that the operation is in compliance with all local bylaws and ordinances, and we would recommend you authorize the chair to sign accordingly. Patricia Fassif, Patricia from Heal is on the call tonight, if you have any questions about anything related to Heal Sturbridge.
Okay, any questions? Mary?
I don't have a question, I just would find, and I would never hold anything off, but I would, I think it's useful if all the departments that have regulatory authority over the applicant put it in a memo in writing that they reviewed it, and I know Jeff is telling us it's fine, but it's nice to have a record of that for the future. So I'm going to request that the department heads do submit something in writing accordingly.
Okay, Jeff, is that okay?
It's fine, I have emails from each one that says it's in compliance, so I can just ask them to put it in a memo.
Awesome, it's afforded to us, so there's some record of it, so we have it. You know, because we're asked to sign off, and I'd like to have that in writing.
I'll get a memo from each one.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
Mike, I'll make a motion that the board finds that the applicant, Heal Sturbridge, Inc. is in compliance with all local bylaws and ordinances, and authorize the chair to sign the municipal response indicating compliance.
You have a second? Okay, any discussion? Ace, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary?
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, Patricia? Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on request by Massachusetts Cannabis Commission to find that Caregiver Patient Connection LLC is in compliance with all municipal bylaws and ordinances in relation to their application for a license for an adult-use marijuana retail establishment at 365 Main Street. Okay, Jeff, same explanation?
Yes, ma'am, and again, I will ask the department heads to take their emails and make them more formal into memos for the board.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions on this one? Somebody willing to make a motion?
Catherine Trifilo is here. Catherine from Caregiver is on the call, in case you have any questions.
No questions? Someone willing to make a motion then?
This is Mike, and I'll make a motion that the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen finds that the applicant, Caregiver Patient LLC, is in compliance with local bylaws and ordinances, and authorize the chair to sign the municipal response indicating compliance.
You have a second?
Second, Chase.
Questions? Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary?
Mary, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Good luck, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us in person.
It's been a long time for both of you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, I'm just glad my dog didn't start barking during this.
It would have livened things up.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have old business, COVID update, Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. Kind of the same story, there's a pandemic, and we're doing what we can to keep our crew healthy and safe. You heard a little bit earlier that we're looking at how to handle the bus drivers in the mix of DPW. We have opened COB in Town Hall to normal hours. However, given kind of the trajectory in the state, we may roll those back again, depending upon what happens with the virus statewide. We'll keep an eye on that. But so far, so good, we're able to clean the buildings every day. But we may roll those hours back, depending on what goes on in the community. There seems to be a kind of a tick-up, but it may be time to refresh our commitment to social distancing and some restrictions in order to kind of keep everybody healthy, so I will keep the board up to date on that. So far, we've had no one travel out of state and not quarantine or have to quarantine since we adopted that vacation policy. The governor's travel ban took effect on, or not travel ban, but travel order took effect on August 1st, so if you do travel out of state to one of the states on the quarantine list, you're supposed to quarantine when you get back. All those things are in place, so we'll see how it goes. But that's what I have for COVID.
I just have one question. Is there an update on the library staff?
We're in the process of training their, what we're calling gatekeepers, but doorkeepers, so they can open up the main lobby facility in the main circulation area on a very narrow track, you know, around the interior of that circulation area. But the programs in the different floors won't be open, just that main area. We're getting some stanchions, training their doorkeepers, making sure we have the ability to clean the building every day. So hopefully, they will look to kind of reopen somewhat to the public in the next few weeks.
Great, thank you. I know people are home more, so that's kind of increased people's desire to read, I think.
Right, right.
Okay, next, Jeff, is the electricity?
Yes, and Beth, I think, is on the call, Beth Greenblatt, who's our energy consultant. I'm going to share my screen, which has, well, let me give you some backdrop. So at the last meeting, you looked at some preliminary pricing, and, you know, you found it good. Prices are still somewhat down, but you also asked for a green option. You saw a green option, you asked, what would the cost be of 100% green option? So to go 100% green, the difference between what the state minimum mandated mix of energy is in 100% green is roughly $19,000 to $20,000 over the three-year time period. Roughly $6,300, $6,400 per year difference in total electrical cost between, you know, the minimum standard and 100% green. Ms. Greenblatt had a terrific idea that we'll price it not only at the minimum level and at 100%, but she priced it at 50% green, which is higher than the minimum, but less than 100%. And that came back where the total over the three years was about $9,000 to $10,000, total above the base rate, but it's also less than what we're paying now. We're paying .88071 per kilowatt now, and the 50% green for 36 months with direct energy is .087 versus .088. So there is a savings with even increasing our green purchase or green energy mix. And I can put up, I'm going to put up kind of a spreadsheet here, so you can look at that a little bit. I'm going to share my screen, and let me get to this. So here's the summary, let me move this down a bit. Okay, so can you see that chart? Or is it too small?
Yes.
Hi. Nope, it's fine.
Okay, so Beth, Beth is on the call, Beth, you want to explain this a little bit?
Sure. Hi, folks, how's everyone doing?
Hi, Beth.
Good to see you all, albeit virtually. So as Jeff said, we looked at multi-year pricing, as we have always in the past, 12, 24, and 36-month pricing. And in doing so, we also asked for 50% green and 100% green. So if you look at the green columns, you'll see the RPS compliant, which is the Renewable Portfolio Standard, it's sort of the minimum green requirement as allowed under Massachusetts state law. The pricing for that, which came from Constellation as the lowest price, was a little over 8.1 cents. Greening it up 50% of the supply, which means they actually go out into the market and they buy for 50% of your requirements with national wind renewable energy certificates. So you would say that 50% of your would say that 50% of your supply is supported by green energy. Um, we also asked them, as Jeff said, to price it at 100% green, where they buy sufficient quantity of renewable energy certificates to, um, classify your entire, um, electricity purchase, um, up to 100%. And that is incrementally higher. And you can see what the incremental adder is for the, for the green, sort of the premium for green as you head down into the different rows. So as an example, a 50% green offer for the 12-month pricing is 8.79 cents. That's at 3.88 million kilowatt-hours a year. It costs, the value of that is, um, $341,000 and change. But the actual cost of that 341 that's attributable to that 50% green is about $2,700. It's over that 12-month period. And so the adder on a per-unit basis is .0007 cents. Does that make sense? If we look at the 100% piece over that 12-month period, the premium for that is, is about twice that. Now they're buying for 100% of the supply as opposed to 50. And the incremental adder, the unit adder for the green, for 100% green is .0014, 1.4 mill. So then if you look at the 24-month piece, the pricing for the supply, base supply, which differs in 12 months, because I think, as we've spoken in the past, what the supplier does is they look at your monthly volumes times the monthly market rate, and they calculate a weighted average for that entire term. So as you can see, that while it's, you know, generally flat, it's a little higher in the second year, which is a function of just where the market is in the second year. So the market in the second year is a little higher. But if you look at the implication of the green, it's for 50% green for that 24, entire 24-month period, the, the cost is $287. Um, total, the annual cost is $3144. And the im- the impact on a per-unit basis, about 50% green, is .00081. And then you can see it's double that for 100% green. And then we looked at a three-year, we even went out and looked at a four-year deal. Um, but the most attractive of the four years was doing a three-year deal. And that's primarily because market pricing in the third year dropped a little, so it helped bring down the weighted average. But as you can see, and as Jeff said, sort of the annual, for pre- adding green, 50% green, the annual financial impact is about $3,100 for a three-year deal, um, and about $6,400 over a, a year for 100% green for each of those three years. Any questions on that?
Anyone have a question?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank you, Beth and Jeff, for showing up, um, a 50% option as well. And Mike, thank you for bringing this to our attention about possibly going green or fully green. I, I like having this, um, option for us to consider.
I think one other thing, if I can, you know, Jeff asked me the absolute right question earlier, and that is, well, you know, the, the crystal ball question, where do you think the market's gonna go? And is this a good time to lock in? Because once you lock in a long-term deal, like 36 months, similar to some of the longer-term contracts that you've been in, you're, you're locked in. The supplier goes out and hedges into the, into the futures market, into the commodities market, and they put that hedge on their balance sheet. So when you lock in, you're locked. There's some flexibility. You're not tied to a specific contract number. There's some things that we worked through as part of the contracting, and Town Council has actually looked at the contract for one of the suppliers for direct energy. Uh, Constellation's is pretty similar. Um, and you guys have been served by Constellation in the past. But what, one of the things that, you know, as I, as I've said in the past, is entering into a long-term deal when the market is competitive and attractive allows me to do some better budgeting and planning, because you're locking in, you're hedging that piece of your overall energy cost. The utility costs are gonna be what they are, the delivery charges. They're gonna be whatever the regulators allow them to have to charge you. But the supply cost, you're locking in and you're able to provide a little bit of edge on your future budget.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
No, thank you. I, I get the whole hedging and, and locking in. But what kind of impact is it going to have, do you think, um, on, on these, I assume these four factors based on, you know, the pandemic, but what kind of impact has it had?
Well, that's a terrific, yeah, that's a terrific question. So one of the things that COVID has done is it's slowed down our economy. And by slowing down our economy, the, the implication is, is that the demand for energy has dropped. And so because the demand has dropped, natural gas pricing is pretty low. It's in the mid, on a wholesale level, it's in the mid, you know, two and a half dollars a decathirmann natural gas. Why does that matter? It matters because about 70 to 75% of our supply is fueled or by, our generation is fueled by natural gas. So as the natural gas market goes up and down, so does our electricity market. And so right now, with, with man being down, prices are depressed. They've softened. And so we're really taking advantage of a down market as we look at some of the longer terms.
Okay, that makes, thank you.
And, and I will say that baked into the forward pricing right now is an expectation that the economy will begin to improve early next year. And if that doesn't happen because of what, you know, Jeff was talking about earlier, if it doesn't happen, there's a chance that market pricing will decline. But the question is, is do you think the probability of market pricing declining at a greater rate or potentially increasing? If the economy comes back and comes back with a roar, you'll see an increase in demand and prices will likely go up. So I would say the probability of it going down more than it will go up is not likely.
Right.
And it's crystal balling.
Let's assume, I know some medical experts are saying the end of the year or the beginning of the next one for high-risk people having a vaccine. Certainly, I would hope within a year of next, by next year at this time, and that's just gonna push the, that's gonna rehabilitate our economy, and then these prices could probably be higher.
I would expect as the demand starts to increase, we will begin to see, you know, a push on the energy market, so mostly them beginning to rebound. I mean, I think everybody, everybody saw, I don't know what, two months ago when oil was actually at a, Krueger was like at a negative number. It was crazy. And energy companies went bankrupt. And it was because demand had just stopped. So I don't expect that's gonna happen with the natural gas market. We are, we have a lot of natural gas right now, and the market is reflective of that.
Hey, anyone else? Yes?
So, to wrap this back to, uh, what we're asking the board, uh, you can see that it's still very attractive, whether you pick the minimum state mix of energy or the 50%, or even if you want to go to the 100%, it's only slightly higher, uh, yearly than what we're paying now. But we would have, before we locked in, we would have to, Beth would have to refresh the pricing in the morning. And then we would have to decide to lock in or not. So the proposed action would be that the Chair would authorize me to lock in once we shared the pricing with the Chair to make sure that we're still consistent with the desires of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, and that's kind of where we are this evening. We see that 36-month pricing is the most advantageous. There are pricing opportunities that save us money. So we would look for the refresh in the morning to be, if not identical, very, very close to where we are today. The pricing you're looking at was today's pricing. Um, and that would be our ask for this evening.
Okay, Mary?
Um, I'll just start the discussion, because I'm sure everybody's gonna have their own thing to say. But, um, to me, listening to Beth and Jeff and the fact that the economy is depressed and you can lock in, I would be leaning towards the 36-month agreement. And also, uh, kudos to Mike. I'd, I'd like to, to be more than simply RPS compliant, which is the bare minimum. And I'd like to see us at least go to the 50% green. We can be a leader of the community, of the, rather than follower. And perhaps in three years, we could try to be 100% green. But I would like personally to do more than the bare minimum. I don't think that's a lot of money to pay for a three-year period of time, um, at all. So, um, those are my initial thoughts.
Okay, other comments or questions?
This is Mike, and, uh, the pricing here looks like the market's anticipating a V-type recession. And, uh, we're coming, it's showing a modest, uh, growth for the, you know, the following two years after this year. So, you know, in the energy markets, anything can happen, uh, you know, uh, that, that could raise, uh, oil and gas prices to double what they are right now. So that's really what's driving this pricing. So I, I agree with Mary Dowling and, uh, the Town Administrator that, that perhaps, uh, 36-month pricing is the safest bet for the town. Um, and, you know, I, it's like, uh, you know, the, the difference between 50% green and 100% green is, you know, we half-in or all-in. And, um, you know, I'm inclined to go all-in with green at this time. Is it probably, uh, I mean, we, Town of Sturbridge, uh, is well-invested in, in its, in, in green, uh, type of, uh, things that we do and, and the, the type of, uh, image that we want to portray, portray to the public. So I, I would, uh, recommend 36-month and 100, 100% green based on the pricing I'm looking at in front of me. All right, that's what I was brought for.
Okay.
Um, I, I agree with, with, uh, Selectmen Dowling and Suppanaut with the 36-month pricing. I think we can lock in at a great rate right now. Um, I'm more inclined to go with the 50% green, um, and then see where we are in three years, just because we did do quite a bit of cuts. And, you know, I think 50% is getting us going in the right direction. Uh, so I would be happy with the 36-month 50% green.
Okay, Ian, do you have a comment?
Yep. Um, I'm for the 36-month pricing. I tend to lean more towards being fiscally conservative and going with the cheapest number. I could support the 50% number a little more than the 100%. Um, I think the 100% decision is something that should probably come from the town in the form of a town meeting amendment or something like that.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion then?
Oh, wait, hold on. Um, I didn't think anybody else would support the 100%. But I, if, if I will support Mike on 100, for me, it's a minimum of 50%. I think as leaders of the town, this is, I can appreciate Ian, your, your, um, input about bringing it to the town, but for the kind of money that we're talking, given our budget, given our free cash, given that we do like to be on the forefront of being green. I mean, we have a lot of open space. And I'm quite surprised by how little the premium is to go 100% green. I thought it was going to be cost prohibitive, but at roughly $6,200 a year, and in year one, $5,433, I think the town can afford, um, $5,000 a year premium on our electricity to set the example and be green. So I'm hoping that perhaps we could go 100% green as, as Michael, as Mike is, um, suggesting. Um, at a, at a minimum 50%. I, I just feel like, let's reduce our, our imprint and let's set the example for surrounding towns, because this is not a lot of money to pay in terms of the premium for doing something really good for our environment. So.
Okay, I, um, I tend to agree with Chase and Ian on the 50% now. And, you know, three years goes by pretty quickly. Um, so I also would be willing to go with 36-month and 50% green. Okay, so we have a lot of opinions out there. Do Jeff?
I just want to make, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, just as, just so you know, the Direct Energy is the lowest pricing provider. Um, their contract has been reviewed by Town Council, and there is a provision in that contract that basically says if our energy consumption changes by 25%, which is quite a bit, up or down, they have an opportunity to come back and, and have some differential pricing. We don't anticipate a 25% swing in our energy consumption over three years, but it just needs to be put to the board to let you know that that's in there. Um, Direct Energy and KP Law have negotiated these contracts before. Um, and KP has sent, we've sent our revised contract to Direct Energy, which they have approved the KP changes in the past with other communities. But there is a 25% swing in that agreement that, uh, there's a threshold for them to make some changes to pricing if we move, deviate 25% more or less.
I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Mary.
Um, Jeff, when you say 25%, is that like cumulative? So in year one, if we use 15% more, and in year two, we use 10% more than that? Or is it 25% more a year?
Beth, go ahead, please.
So basically, what this is, is a material change provision. If your usage on, uh, a monthly, every, uh, yeah, for two months varies, weather notwithstanding, so weather is, is accounted for. They don't deem you if the weather changes, right? If your usage materially changes, that's typically as a result of shutting down a building or closing an operation, you know, doing something that's significant that would dramatically reduce your loads. 25% as Jeff said, is a big swing in usage. So it's not cumulative, it's not a, it's a snapshot. And it's not that they are penalizing you, it's because if they get penalized by the utility, it's a balancing thing on the utility system. If they get penalized by the utility, they get to assess that penalty to you.
I get it, a material change. Um, I don't think that's happened to Sturbridge in the past, has it?
No.
You've been our representative for a while.
Right.
Yeah. And can you just tell me, um, I know you probably represent a lot of municipalities. Um, how many have gone 100% green? If, if, if you're able to comment?
Um, so interestingly, some communities that you think would have gone 100% green have not. Um, a lot of the smaller municipalities have gone some degradation of green. So some have done 50, some have done 100. There's no magic number. We could have come back and given you 75% green. It's really, if you look at that incremental adder, it's basically, um, weighting that over the volume. But I, I would say that the direction, because the incremental cost for natural wind rec is, as you see, pretty insignificant. I'm, I'm seeing more municipalities greening up their portfolio. What happens by greening it up, whether you do 50 or 100, you will actually get renewable energy certificates. They have no monetary value to you, but they have bragging rights. You can put them on your wall and say, we are buying green power. 50% of our supply or 100% of our supply is bona fide green. So it's, there, it's greenie certified. It's certified green energy. Um, I would say 50/50. It depends. Some of the larger cities have not chosen to do so. They are beginning to look at it as they're doing municipal aggregations and offering greener supplies. But it could go.
10%, thank you. Um, possibly open up more, um, opportunities for grants in the future? Plus, that we're able to put when we rep, uh, apply for grants?
And the green energy program doesn't acknowledge or treat this as a bonus necessarily. Um, it could provide, if you were building a new school, which I know you're not going to because Burgess is relatively new, um, but if you were building and you were looking for either LEED certi-, um, LEED certification or CHIPS or something that you would need to show that you're buying green energy, you would get extra points for that. So I have a lot of municipalities that have built brand-new schools, and in order to help boost their LEED certification, they've backstopped their supply with, with, you know, 100% renewable.
The, the same would apply for, say, a senior center, a new senior center, or, or reconstructing the, okay, thank you.
It could help.
Okay, any other questions for Beth? Okay, any more discussion? Somebody want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion for the, uh, town administrator to lock in a 36-month, 50% green deal pending the price stays relatively similar.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, I'll second that. I mean, I'd like 100, but I want to get something more than the compliant, so I'll second 20%.
Okay, any more discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mary, how do you vote?
Mary, yes.
Okay?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, Beth, thank you very much.
Okay, I just have a question for Beth in the morning. What time are you going to price it?
We will ask the, we will ask Direct Energy to provide, and we'll ask Constellation also just in case their prices flip-flop and remind them that you're making a buying decision, to sharpen those pencils. Um, we'll ask them to mark it open. I'll see if, uh, maybe too late to get a notice out to them, but, but I'll have Tony get to him first thing in the morning. Once we get pricing back, Jeff, I will get that information to you tomorrow. Um, you'll have to tell me what the term is that you want, and, you know, I'm assuming it's going to be three years. Um, and then this contract has to be signed by 5:00 tomorrow.
Okay. So, Mary Blanchard, you'll be around?
Um, not in the afternoon.
Okay.
Aren't we, are we designating you to sign? You can run by, I can talk to you on the phone, and you can run, run it by me for my agreement.
Well, I can sign it, but we, I need to verify with you that it's acceptable.
Yes, no, I mean, I'll be, you know, by phone it's fine, right?
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Thanks, folks, stay healthy.
Yes, you too.
Okay, take care.
All right, we're going to get back to-
Grab a crunchy bag, Mary. Feed it dinner while I talk.
You gotta share if you're going to have snacks.
Yes, I want some.
Did you bring enough for everybody?
Okay, next, Magelton Road, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Um, I put in a request out to our DEP contact on that. She is gathering up the information on where they are with the project, and as soon as I get that information back, I will get that to the board, uh, and then we can discuss it at a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I was hoping to have it today for the meeting, but I didn't hear anything back yet.
Anyone else have old business, Mary?
Um, no.
Mike?
No.
Ian?
No.
Chase?
No.
Okay, and I don't. Okay. Okay, new business? Um, discussion about sponsoring a zoning amendment for the Equestrian Center? Jeff, you want to run through this, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. In our conversation with Mr. George on the process, and our, and Jonathan Eichmann with KP Law, on the design and development of the actual zoning ordinance for the Equestrian Center, uh, the conversation came up about the flexibility of a zoning article and how, if the property owner or the applicant petitions for the zoning change, how stagnant, or not stagnant, but how rigid that petition zoning article then becomes. It can't be changed, it can't be amended, um, but if the board were to sponsor it, then that can evolve as it works its way through the approval process, and it can be amended and adjusted and tweaked and become more, perhaps more acceptable to the community at large and be accepted at town meeting, rather than just this static document that is what it is, and that's what people have to vote on. So, having those conversations, we were asking the board, is there an interest in being the sponsor of the zoning article? That way it can be tweaked and amended and have conversations about it, rather than just a stagnant document that has to be taken as-is. And there, the email from Jonathan Eichmann, who says that much more eloquently, eloquent, eloquently than I can, is in the packet, and he kind of describes the situation, um, with the zoning article. Mr. George is on the call, is Mr. Janigian, is that how you say that, say your name?
Janigian. Janigian.
Jidian, thank you. So, that's kind of where we are?
Okay, questions? Rob, you're still working with Gene, right, on, um, the language?
Yes, yes, okay. So, we're still working with Gene. I think we have come to a template, that's almost completely done. We're just hammering out a few last details. And, um, we're looking, uh, it came up again during our conversations with the town attorney. Um, you know, if we were to sponsor ourselves, we'd have to get 70 signatures because it's a special town meeting, and after we got that, it would be very difficult to make any changes. And our thoughts are really that if the board is going to support this, and I know you guys may, have not made your final decision on that yet, but it would make more sense that if this is something the board's going to support, to have the board actually sponsor the zoning amendment for the reasons Jeff just cited. So, um, again, we're, we're not presuming you're in support, you're support, we're hoping for it, and we're here, uh, to answer any questions you guys might have.
Okay, I just had a little clarification on that. At a special town meeting on a petition, there was actually 100 signatures.
Okay, I just speak with the town clerk, and I thought it was 10% of the last vote, which was 700, but, okay, 100.
Yeah, no, we, we have it in our town charter as-
Okay, all right, so, that's fine. So, yeah, 100 signatures.
Yeah, it's just 10 for, uh, Ian. Okay, questions that come from the board? Okay?
I would be, with a project this magnitude and, and so many different things, I would be in favor of, of sponsoring it, um, uh, just for the fact that things would need to be changed. It would help, it would help Mr. Janigian, you know, it would help the process, and I, I would be in favor of-
Okay, Ian, comment?
Um, I missed the first meeting, obviously, where you guys brought the proposal, but I reviewed it. I think it's something very interesting for the town. It is something that we should get behind, at least initially, as the plan develops and see where it goes. So if this is the most advantageous way for us to support it, then I would support it, too.
Ian, Michael?
Um, yeah, I, I believe that, uh, no, if, if the Board of Selectmen, uh, if we go along with, uh, sponsoring this zoning, uh, bylaw or amendment, that there'd be greater, uh, public participation in the process, uh, than if the, the owner of the land petitioned. So I, I, for something of this, uh, import in, to the town, and I think it would be good to have us a, some public participation. I think at, at the meeting, the last meeting, I, uh, pointed out that, you know, we had similar proposals or proposals for a racetrack in town, uh, many years ago, and, uh, at times that didn't go too well. So I'd like to see what, what, uh, if, if we're going to sponsor it, I would like the, the board to solicit input from the community as well, uh, to see where we stand on the proposed bylaw, and maybe we might have to tweak it or amend it, or do something before it goes, uh, to a hearing before the planning board.
Okay. Well, Mike, that's, um, the advantage of having the Board of Selectmen sponsor it, we can change it. Whereas, as Jeff says, you know, with the proponents, it would have to be petitioned, it would have to be exactly as is. Mary?
Well, I, I know the way the vote's going to go, but just for the record, I will say that I, I'm not going to, um, I'm not going to vote in favor of sponsoring. I do understand and I can appreciate that there's more flexibility and more input, but at the same time, a sponsorship is the first level of support, and I, at this point, cannot support it. I think that, um, the business owner should go forward and, and get the petition people. This is a major, major zoning change. It didn't come from us, it came from a business that wants to put a racetrack in. And given the impact that it's going to have on many, many neighborhoods, this is several hundred acres of green zone, so I, I know I'm going to, you know, the vote's going to be different, but I cannot vote to sponsor it, one thing doesn't happen before.
Okay, you know, Mary, even getting down to the final minute, even if we do sponsor it when we put it on the warrant, we still have the option of voting to approve, to disprove.
I agree. And, um, I, I had to kind of go back and forth today as I, as I reviewed my whole packet, but it tends to take on a life of its own, and once you give that vote to sponsor it, word gets out that the Board of Selectmen support it, they're sponsoring it, and I just can't put my name on that. But I appreciate, yes, you can, you can put it on the warrant and then vote, again, vote not to recommend this, but once we sponsor it, I would, it's a judgment call at that point, but I will not vote in favor tonight. I will think they should go forward and, and get the signatures that they need.
Okay, um, would somebody be willing to make a motion, or Jeff, do you have one written?
I do not. This was for conversation, but I think the motion could be that the Board of Selectmen would sponsor, um, this bylaw amendment as requested for an Equestrian Center. And it's that simple.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
Can I say so?
Okay, anyone want to second it?
Uh, I'll second it, Mike.
Okay, discussion? Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Mary?
No.
And I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think Mr. George had a comment.
No, just, uh, thank you for your consideration, and, um, uh, you know, we'll, we're here if you have any questions. Don't hesitate to contact us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Janigian, thank you for joining us tonight.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time, and, uh, I, I hope at some point when I can meet with you all, you know, in person, but I'd love to be able to talk about some things we might be able to do that the town would be interested, since it's a large fossil, if there are some agencies like council and aging and schools about, and I've done that in the towns that I operate businesses, and I would love to be able to do that and see if there are some things that maybe the town would like to see, uh, as we go, you know, hopefully as this goes forward. Um, so, maybe some flexibility that your board would have in case you came up with something that maybe the town would like to do there, that you could have then adjusted to accommodate if it, if it wasn't able to have. But I thank you very much for your time, I really do.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Before, uh, Mr. Janigian, and I'm horrible with names, I apologize, and Mr. George, sign off. Mr. Eichmann, the town council did comment about how the, the racetrack portion, the actual racetrack itself, gets the endorsement of the board. This is only, the board tonight only said they'd sponsor the bylaw, not approve a racetrack, so I think we need to clarify that. But also, there's a process by which the board has to approve the location of a racetrack, and that's according to Municipal General Law 20, 128A, chapter or section 113A. And at some point, I would expect Mr. George to bring something forward for that, the actual location of the racetrack?
Okay, I, I think the engineering is moving along. I'm not exactly sure if, you know, where it's going to go exactly yet. Armid, maybe you, you do?
Yes, um, we do have the layout, uh, which, uh, we can show the board or whenever, um, the architects actually laid out, uh, a number of layouts, and we do have one, uh, that would, would like to present it whenever you would like us to. Um, we do have that ready.
Okay, Jeff?
Uh, Mary had her hand up, also.
Well, no, I just have a question that perhaps Jeff will be able to help. I've had a number of residents, um, approach me and ask what the actual process is, you know, what's the next step, what's the next step? So, um, Jeff, if I understand the, the, um, motion to support a racetrack is entirely separate, and I got that from Copeland and Page's memo, but does that come at any point in the process, or does that only come after the planning board has the public hearing and there's the, or it goes before town meetings of the zoning? When, when, like, maybe if you could just provide a rough timeline of what happens in sequence? Or could we approve the racetrack even before it goes to town meeting? Like, what happens first, second, third? That would be helpful, because then I can tell residents, uh, because after the initial introduction, where the board said, "Move forward," they started approaching me saying, "Now is that a planning?" And I said, "Well, no, it's not a planning yet, because we didn't, you know, we didn't introduce it to planning." So, if you give us something, that would help, be helpful for me.
We can definitely work with Mr. George and the applicant on setting up a timeline, but for both, the request of the Board of Selectmen to approve the parcel as a racetrack, there needs to be a public hearing that's noticed in open comment. So there'll be a public hearing for the actual location of the racetrack, and then there'll be the planning board process and the zoning bylaw process for the zoning which would allow the Equestrian Center. Those are two separate, probably parallel tracks in this case.
Okay, so they'll happen simultaneously?
They could, or they, but we would, we're going to work with Mr. George on kind of putting together a step-by-step process that they want to take, um, and then present it to the board, say, "This is kind of the schedule or calendar we're looking at, and that way you have something to work towards, and we know what's expected of us," and what the applicant's expected as well, yes.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have new business, Mary?
No.
Mike? Chase?
I have none.
Ian?
No.
And I have none. Next is-
Next is correspondence, Mike?
We have a letter dated July 20th, from Terratech, it says, it's actually July 13th, and it's a letter to the town administrator regarding the Phase 2 Conferensive Site Assessment for Allen Tool on 421 Main Street. And the second piece of correspondence is the Office of the Inspector General, and it's a settlement payment to the town of Sturbridge regarding the, it's just a settlement payment for $6,960 and $25,000, Pioneer and Noble Mislected Allocation. The third piece of correspondence is CMG Environmental, Inc., it's a notice of Phase 1 environmental assessment for 53 Karen Street. And then the last one is from Charter Communications, again, for more upcoming changes to the system, they're adding some WWE Justice Network to the system, and the channel lineup again is changing, actually adding another station. And that's it for correspondence for this meeting.
Okay, does anyone else have any other correspondence? Okay, approval of minutes, July 20th?
I have no changes.
Andrea, on page 239, the top paragraph there? The third lineup where it says, "Have a copy of the DCR, you need to insert the word certificate." What is this on the public here?
Uh, the logging permit.
Okay. Does Chair Blanchard state that she didn't have a copy of the DCR?
Yeah, it should be DCR certificate.
Certificate.
I see.
Then it's next line, the same thing, certificate missing.
And then on page 241, under removal of the tree? The first line you had wrote, should be had written.
You're tough, that's tough, that's tough stuff right there, that's just-
Very great, very great, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Blanchard. Yeah, it's okay, one more, and the second line there, safety complex, is a proper noun, capital letters. Wait, was that another fix? Yeah, it is. Wait, what is it? Say it again?
Uh, the second line, safety complex, should be capital F and a capital C. Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Anyone else? There are motions to approve it, intended?
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, and it's amended.
There's seconds.
Second, Jeff.
I should know them. Ian, how do you vote? Mike?
Yes.
Ace?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, citizen's forum?
Let me find out. Good evening, is there anyone on the call this evening that would like to speak? Hello, is there anyone on the public line tonight that would like to speak? There's no one on the public line, and there's no emails to the public comment folder.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, then?
It's on move.
There's seconds. I'll second the motion.
Second.
Mary B.
Nobody wants to go home.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
You seem hesitant. Mary? And I vote yes. Okay, have a good night, people.
Good night.
Good day.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Stay safe.